Then call the Village Nuclearis Board meeting to order. Lynn, would you do the roll call, please?
Michael Bell.
Present.
Mike Ganzer.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Sure.
Tammy Newberry.
I'm here.
Yeah, just saying, I talked to Lynn since she left the university.
Chuck Phillipson.
That's.
Chuck Phillipson.
Here.
Roger Trupman.
Here.
Lori Words.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. We have a quorum. I look for approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the exception or with a modification of moving item five E to the front before five A.
Five E.
So the discussion and consideration of the street use permit for the Halloween car parade, I just wanted to move that up above all the financial discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item three, public appearances and citizens comments. No debate will occur with the board on items introduced by citizens. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting, but will be referred to the proper staff committee if action is required. And if you so wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone on that would like to speak? Okay, hearing none, I'll move on to approval of the consent agenda.
This is Tammy, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would second, Mike Ganzer.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item five, new business. We moved, we have it.
Number D, item E.
But we don't have to change it up here. It's A1 or something? Okay. We're going to consider, item E, discussion considerations, street use permit for Halloween car parade.
This is submitted last week. Trustee member Tammy Newberry has worked with a number of community stakeholders to help organize this event. The Chamber is the sponsoring organization. They've agreed to utilize their insurance for the event. This is designed to be a safer alternative to trick or treat this year. Currently, at this time, the police department is not intending to set trick or treat hours based on CDC guidelines. The event would be contactless and would not involve an exchange of candy. The permit is included, which includes the proposed route. Was included in your packet. If there's any questions, Becca with the Chamber is on the meeting, as well as I could answer some, or Tammy is available as well.
Answered, Mike here. I would move for the approval of the permit for the Halloween car parade.
I would second that, Lori Words.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item eight, consideration discussion preliminary 2021 budget. Drake?
Included in your packet, you'll see a memo from myself. It gives a summary of the preliminary, the draft 2021 budget. The highlights, I guess, will be that we received our net new construction number, and it was approximately 0.52%. This is the, that's the lowest net new construction number we've had in a number of years that equated to about a levy increase allowable of about $5,400. Based on this information, our goal when drafting this budget was to maintain the current level of services that the village has been providing. And with that in mind, the only significant increase that you would see that we chose to pursue was a 2% wage increase for employees. This is consistent with labor contracts the board has with its represented employees. And so we applied that across the board to take, to use our levy increase for that purpose. There's any questions on the memo? I'd be happy to answer them. I can, I could take us through it. But I guess the numbers that typically we are asked for is the estimated mill rate would increase about 25 cents from $8.25 to $8.50 per $1,000 of taxable value. On page 11 of your packet and page three of the memo, it shows what that would increase would be on home values of $100,000, $150,000, $200,000, and $250,000. On a $200,000 home, it would be an annual increase of $50. Some other items, the health insurance cost for the village did go up. We did decrease the village's share to 86%, down from 88% of the Tier One plan. So those are the main general fund highlights. As you can see on the next page, page 12 of your packet, page four of the memo, we are not, we are levying $0 for levied capital costs, things such as equipment replacement, technology replacement, things of that nature, capital items that we don't necessarily borrow for. We are projecting borrows of $1,440,000. That reflects the construction of the public library and completion of the Glarner Park Improvement Project. That's what we're estimating at this, at this time for potential borrows. Those borrows would, of course, have to be approved at a later date by the village board. Fire and EMS proposals are consistent with the contracts we've signed. EMS has a 1% increase due in 2021, however, based on our most recent population estimate from the state. We have a population of 2,085, which is a decrease. So this decrease is the actual amount we would be paying per the contract by about $1,300. We have yet to receive state highway aid that's not reflected in this budget yet. When that does become available, we will, based on what the numbers are, we will try and allocate as staff sees, recommends, and then alert the village board as to what changes may have occurred once those numbers are reflected in the budget. We are in compliance with the state expenditure restraint program. The debt service levy is, has increased, which is outside of the allowable levy increase to reflect some of the projects that we've done the past couple of years. So that's an increase of approximately $44,500 compared to 2020. Other than that, item 12 is probably of interest. So to compensate for our inability to levy capital operational funds, we are recommending a transfer from general fund surplus to a variety of sinking funds, specifically $10,000 to the Police Department Squad Car Replacement Fund, $10,000 to the Public Works Sinking Fund, $5,000 to the Park and Pool Sinking Fund, $5,000 to Village Hall Technology, and $5,000 to the Facility Sinking Fund. And we recommend doing this in order to best position the village for the expenditure restraint program to keep our levels of our actual expenses consistent across the years to ensure that the base of which expenditure restraint is calculated off of does not decrease and adversely affect the village in future budget years. And also bring your attention to the item under that succession planning. Our village clerk, Lynn, has told me that she's planning a retirement at the end of 2021 or early in 2022. As the state approaches, administration may request the use of additional fund balance to hire a replacement to train prior to her retirement. Obviously, there's a lot of experience there to, that will need replacement, which will be very difficult to replace. And so some overlap to train, a replacement, could be beneficial to the village. And so that cost ranges between $11,500 and $15,000 for 2021, depending on which position is posted and the salary that is decided upon by the village board. So in summary, as in past years, we've prepared the budget that balances the operational and capital needs of the community within the fiscal and regulatory constraints that I have noted above. This is accomplished through the prioritization of projects and borrowing for new projects in fiscal year 2021. And then under that, you can see a history of what the general fund levy has looked like dating back to 2015. If there are any specific questions, Lynn and I are available to answer them. And then we also do have Holly with the library as present, as are Bert and Jeff with the police department.
I have a question, Drake. Just overall, every department's budget, when you, when you look at it as they came in, could you give a general summary of how COVID has impacted the budgets? Have they, have they, and I know I could have looked at all of this myself, but in general, have they impacted it in a negative way, or has it provided a little bit of savings?
It, I wouldn't say that there have been savings due to COVID. I don't think we're in a poor position. We are still utilizing the CARES Act funding to cover expenses directly related to COVID. Obviously, there's been some operational changes that have occurred, but I think the staff has inducted themselves very well and has worn their PPE and limited their interaction with the public as possible. So at this time, we are not seeing a huge budgetary impact, other than obviously what we're utilizing the CARES Act funding for to purchase PPE or equipment that we wouldn't have otherwise needed, but of course, that's grant funded. Going forward, I don't know how it might affect future budgets or the overall impact on the economy in years going forward that could impact the budget. That's always a possibility. I know many communities, what's made, what they have suffered from is a loss of revenue from things such as building permit revenue or room tax revenue. And both of those for Nuegris are largely pass-throughs, one to the, obviously to the Chamber as our tourism entity, and then the building permit revenue towards the building inspector to pay for that service.
Okay, I have one more question. Is that okay with the rest of you? Okay. My other question will be directed to Holly, but I, I just have a question about the last time the library had an increase, and I was looking at from 2015. It's short of $50,000. Is most of the increase that you need due to health insurance costs? Is that what's driving this?
Yes, that, that accounts for the majority of this. We were asked to keep the rest of the budget flat, and while I did make two fairly significant changes, I adjusted other, other areas of the budget to make up for that, so that we're not asking for anything beyond that seven and a half percent of the big increase on the healthcare for us.
Okay, thanks. And then my other question for you was, I noticed it said in the notes that there were losses of revenue. Where would those be?
So I believe what that would refer to, and I apologize, I don't have your full packet in front of me, so I haven't seen that.
Oh, okay.
But I believe that would probably refer to the fines. We are, and this is not yet confirmed by the library board, we're actually discussing it tomorrow night, so if you'd like to do the whole discussion, please feel free to join us. But I will be asking the library board to approve going fine-free in terms of overdue fines. And that will, that will bring, last year, they were like 1.4% of revenue, so we're talking less than $4,000. To make up for that, I have adjusted hours for our part-time staff in order to stay within that flat budget that we were asked for by the, by the village.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Holly.
Sure.
I have a question for Holly. Answered, Mike. And this is not directly, but indirectly related to the budget, and that is on your director's report, August 19, 2020, I see that there's a clerk search. Is that a librarian?
Yes, so a library clerk. We unfortunately lost one of our part-time library clerks. She couldn't get through a shift without getting a migraine from wearing a mask, so she quit, and we luckily have found a very good replacement, and Amy has been on board for about a month now.
Okay, Holly, that's, that's all I needed. I was just a question why clerk search was in there. Nothing more. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any further discussion on item eight?
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question, comment for Drake. I don't recall any specific discussion on the breakdown of the, as the Chair of Parks and Recreation, I don't recall a specific discussion passing on the proposed budget items for Parks and Recreation. Maybe you could refresh my memory on that.
I can't remember the date of the meeting, but at one of our meetings, I did bring up the low net new construction number and allowable levy limit, and indicated that, based on conversations with the Personnel and Finance Committee, that the budget, that my strategy for drafting the budget would be to hold flat any operational, any changes to operating budgets, with the exception of the 2% wage increase for employees. And at the, at the time of that meeting, there were no other, no other questions. Now, if you remember, the, one of the transfers to Park and Pool Sinking, the $5,000, would hopefully be able to, we would utilize that to fund the conversion of the Village Park volleyball courts to a grass court, if the, if the committee and then the board still wanted to go, to go through with that. And then one of the items on my list, if the, if the highway aid numbers come in favorably to us, is to add a portable restroom to Hoesley Park at the, at the cost, the $1,200 per year cost. So those are the two items that had been brought up in past Parks and Recreation Committee meetings as a, as a possible priority for, for funding. And so that's, that's where I, that was my strategy for the budget.
Well, perhaps I misunderstood what went on at this past meeting, but as Parks and Rec Chairman, I believe the Parks and Rec Committee should see a breakdown of the budget requests, number one. So we have a meeting next week. Also, the $400,000 improvement for Glarner Park, is that a projection? Is that, we?
It's just a projection.
We did not agree on a, on a, on a line item budget item, to my knowledge, at $400,000. There may have been estimates or guestimates, but it's my understanding that we were going to wait and see what engineers recommended for cutting costs and then final bids. This far exceeds the previous, previous budgeting for this, and I think it needs to be further delineated before it's put in as a line item, budget item, even for capital improvements or borrowing. So I think it's something to discuss at Parks.
Yep, it is, it is just a projection, and I, typically when we do borrowings, I try to pick the, estimate what the upper limit might be to most accurately reflect what the impact could be on the village's debt capacity in a given year, to estimate that. So it's not, even though it's listed, it's not a guaranteed project at that cost, or that the project would even occur. It's, it's just a, it's just the most likely potential borrowings that the village may incur in the coming year, based on the best information that I've had at the time.
Well, I think we should further discuss this. I don't, frankly, I don't think it looks good as a line item. We had gotten egregious estimates on park improvements, and I don't think we should encourage bidders to go for the highest dollar amount on this. I think we can do better. But I think, I think what we really need to do is readjust our bidding specifications, which we had decided to do at one of our previous meetings, and I think we need to discuss this at our meeting next week. At Parks Meeting next week, okay?
Okay.
If I could just jump in, are we moving? I just wanted to mention the garbage recycling that we talked about spring cleanup, and that there were options for that because it's a $16,000 increase. Could you just buzz everybody with that a little bit of information, Drake?
Sure. You summarized it pretty well, the spring clean is a, and Lynn, correct me if I'm wrong, it's about, there's a significant increase in, in the, what we're levying for the garbage, refuse and recycling fund. Largely, this is to reflect increased costs in county landfill costs, and then the spring clean event, which has increased in, in costs over the last few years. So it's, it's still in there, the full service that it's been in the past. But Lynn, I, I can't recall, I think it's, a few years ago, it was a flat rate. The contract was amended sometime a few years ago, as the, our provider couldn't complete the service at that cost, and it became reflective of actual hours necessary to complete. And it's been a very popular day in past years, which has made it, so it's a two-day, it takes a full two days for the crews to pick up, which has driven, resulted in an increase in the, the cost of the, the service.
Drake, if I, if I might just add, that is absolutely correct. Part of it was a different contractor when we had Veolia. That contract had a really good deal written in for the spring cleanup day, but obviously it's become so well-used that with each, once we opened the contract negotiations, that cost increased substantially. Pelletieri does have a couple of ideas about ways to possibly reduce it to some degree, and one of those was limiting the amount that any given household could put out. So I don't know what the appetite for that is. The other one escapes me, other than, I know Pelletieri did say that after this last year, they will want to break it into two days as well, two sections of the village. So one week they would do this area, or one day they would do this area, and another day they would do the other half of the village. So there's going to have to be some changes based on how it went this last year. What exactly those are, I guess, are still open for discussion, but we have the cost in this budget as if we were doing it the same as 2020. The other part of that fund that it keeps increasing is the landfill, and I think Roger, you probably understand this a little better. At one point, a few years ago, the landfill had some real good market for ag waste, I believe it was, and so they were making good money and not having to charge the member municipalities as much to dump waste. That has gone by the wayside, and now it, it's much more expensive. But that's part of what it is. I don't know how we would get by without that. We've got to have some place to haul it.
I guess my question would be, at what point would we, at what point would we discuss those other options? Not during this meeting, but maybe during what meeting, or where would we discuss those other options?
It's, it's been brought up at Public Works, Public Safety in the past. There hasn't, there hasn't been a desire to change it at this point, but it would, a discussion could, could start there, or if, if there was a high enough interest, we could discuss it at the, the board level as well. And that, those discussions could occur whenever, whenever a discussion of the level of service that the board wanted to provide, whenever they wanted to have that discussion.
This is Peggy. Public Works has discussed that, I think, on an annual basis, and over the years, I've seen this cost grow exponentially. But I know that each time I've raised the issue of perhaps a citizen fee, I know that it's been considered to be quite popular, so no one wants to tread into that territory. I am in favor of exploring it, because I think at some point, it's going to go beyond what we can afford, and we're just going to have to tell the citizens that this is a, this is a perk that we can no longer either afford, or we can no longer sustain ourselves. Because, I mean, I personally think it's really an increase, and I've seen a couple of other communities where there has to be some citizen money involved in this, because we can't, I don't think we can bear this burden much longer. Not that it is a burden, but I guess bear the cost of this, because it is quite pricey, in my opinion.
The only other option would be...
That's everything, I just would like it, oh, sorry.
The only other option would be that if we discontinued it, and then people would have to haul it to the landfill themselves and pay to dump it in the landfill, like when they have mattresses and... when they have mattresses and furniture and stuff.
Right.
Uh I don't know if you want to go down that road, but uh that would be probably the last resort option.
Right. I I've seen other communities have distribution centers or drop-off centers that have worked through a very efficient, actually, uh way to do it, and um the community members have absorbed some some of the cost. I understand what you're saying, uh Roger, but I also see that not everyone in the community uses the service, and so I know that they're paying tax dollars and it's all about, you know, community service, but I thi- this is just a it's just so expensive, and that's the issue that I have. And as we have the same group of people paying for the same things as prices go up, I mean, I I I just think that the money could be used elsewhere to a a better benefit, and of course, that's how I look at it, so.
Well, there are some services that we should provide as a village, as a community. Um yeah, it's expensive, but as Roger said, this stuff has to go somewhere sometime, and for those few people who don't use it, which just anecdotally, driving around Glarus during those times, I think that's a minority of people. Um I'm I'm not sure why this wouldn't be a why this wouldn't be a reasonable expenditure for a welcome project. I'm sorry.
I guess my thought process was, is there is there a different way and that would reduce it? And I think there are a few ideas out there that might bring that down, and I was just bringing it up as something that maybe could be looked at if there are alternative ways of still providing the service, but maybe uh slightly differently, like the people have to haul it to one location or whatever, but it's still free. I I don't know. So it's just something that I noticed.
How does how does that differ from what we're doing now? Or how does that differ from hauling it to the landfill?
I have I've I've talked briefly uh with Pelletary regarding some of their ideas for cost reductions. A- as Lynn had mentioned, uh one is to reduce the amount of things that can be picked up. The other was to set up a a um a central dumpster area, essentially. Uh we would have a a Public Works employee or or an employee um check uh for proof of residence, uh and they they bring it to an area in the village um to drop it off, and then the cost to Pelletary is they come at the the end of the day or whatever and pick up the dumpsters that have that have been filled. Um they I don't have a an exact estimate of of what that would be as far as a reduction, um but Pelletary indicated that there would be a reduction if that was the way it was operated rather than um curbside curbside pickup.
Yeah, well, that sounds s- sounds good, but I mean, who's really going to police this? We can't even police our our brush and compost drop-off. Um how are we going to police something like this? So I don't think that's a great idea. Um I think we either go in all or nothing. We just say you haul your own crap to the landfill, or or we will provide this service as a as a taxable item.
So anyway, I have no objections. I just wanted to discuss it a little bit.
Yeah, I I think you're right, Tammy, but I I'm not sure there's any alternatives. This stuff has to go somewhere, and there's only there's only one place it can go, if you live in the village in Glarus, as far as I know. Uh well, there's actually a couple places it can go. It can go to the landfill, or it can go in the ditches alongside the road. So I think I think we need to consider services that we that that we offer, that yes, they they do they do cost tax money, but um well, you know, maybe maybe a maybe a I I know we can't do this tomorrow, we can't do this within two weeks. Um I I would I would guess that if we had a survey of the citizens, of the taxpayers of New Glarus, I would guess the majority that's I'm just get I that's my my guess, that they would prefer to be able to get rid of rid of their crap because we we all know, we all have too much crap. But how we do that, whatever, I'm old. I can throw mine in a ditch.
My gasser here, and I tend to agree with you, too. If we don't have a place for them to put it, it's going to end up somewhere, and it's going to be end up somewhere where we don't want it.
And I would agree with that. I was just I was just wondering if there was a less expensive way to do it and um talk about those different ways. If the dumpster idea, you know, where people have to bring it down to their dumps to the dumpster a certain day doesn't appeal to anyone, um then I think some sort, you know, this service is better than none. I just think that the cost of that is just getting higher and higher, and if it's predominantly labor cost, then um I would just, you know, wanted to consider the option of can we just do the dumpsters that people can throw stuff in and uh reduce that cost and save some of that money for other projects that, you know, we have that are that are going to be there. But I don't really know that that's a 2020 discussion. I just wanted to uh or excuse me, a 2021 discussion. I just wanted to not leave it unnoted that that seems to be something that is continually growing up, so.
I think if you um look at the amount of stuff that is out on the curbs during our during our annual pickups.
And I have looked at that.
Try to try to project, try to project that amount of of uh trash and where where would this stuff be piled up? Where where do where would where would be a place to pile this stuff up?
And I don't know.
And frankly, and hold on, hold on. And also, um the amount of labor needed to take that because it's not all going in a dumpster, I guarantee you. I don't care how many dumpsters they put in a given place, and we don't have space enough for all of that material uh at one time. And so there's going it's going to be overflowing, and it's going to be all over the place. It's going to be a mess. It's going to be a horrendous mess, and there are going to be people coming in from outside of the village of New Glarus, throwing their crap in there just like they do now. Um I I just think it's a uh it it no, it's it's a uh it's a certain type of show. I don't think it's workable. I really don't. So I think it's a service we need to provide.
I agree with all that, but I think this needs to be discussed at the uh Public Works meeting and then bring it back to the board at a later date. I know it's part of the budget, but uh.
Well, we're we're early on, we're early on with the budget, and we do need some discussions. We need discussions. As I said on Parks, I think we need a discussion on this, possibly on other things. That's why we have these meetings.
Is there any more discussion on item A?
Well, the only the only comment I have about it all is that if I just look at the amount of trash of numbers of people, it always seems to be the same people, and I just feel that sometimes we're subsidizing those people that produce more trash, and and maybe there's just a smarter way to do it. I don't know. Maybe it's impossible, but I think we should probably, Drake, uh start looking at it and see.
Well, I don't know where you came up with that idea, but um.
Well, I can look at my road.
Mr. Chairman, um I don't know where we delineate that certain peoples are putting out more trash than others.
But I do think this is a Public Works.
I think that's a that's a just something off the top of someone's head. Uh I don't think that's worthy of discussion. I think that discussion centers around people being able to get rid of their their materials.
Well, if this is looking at coming back to the Public Works Public Safety, Drake, could you get those numbers together for how much it would cost or how much a reduction would be if we did it in a centralized location or in a specific location? Uh that way, we can entertain that idea, and then we can bring it back to the board uh if the the Public Works feels like it's necessary.
I will certainly try. Uh last time I had asked for a specific number from Pelletary, they they weren't able to produce that, but I will I will ask again.
Okay, moving right along.
So I guess we'll put item A on a future board agenda. Uh and I guess our next would be item B to schedule future budget meetings if necessary. So do you want to, what do we, just to write it to the board? Okay. Does anyone think it's necessary to have a special meeting for the budget, or just do it at a regular board meeting?
Well, the um i- if if Drake thinks it's feasible, I I would think we could have our next at at the uh next regular board meeting. Uh we need to schedule a public hearing by 11:17, right?
That's that's the recommended date to hold the public hearing on.
That's the recommended date? What's the actual uh mandated date? Same thing?
Uh Lynn, when does the budget have to be approved into the county?
Generally, generally, the county sends out the tax bills like starting in that first week of December. So obviously, there has to be a little bit of lead time between the final approval and getting all that information to the county. So depending on when you kind of want the tax bills delivered.
Okay, but um we are required to have a public public a budget public hearing at some point.
Yes.
What is the mandated date for that?
Uh I would have to look back in the statutes. I think the actual mandate comes by when you have to have the tax bills out, and that might be the third Monday in December. I'm not positive. I would have to look at that.
All right. My point is, we have some time, we have some questions on the budget, and um we need to discuss this at at a future budget meetings.
Another.
Go ahead.
Another timeline that comes into play is the the notice for the budget public hearing needs to be um a type two notice, I believe, in the newspaper and published seven days prior to the actual public hearing. So there is that in there as well.
Okay.
So we'd have to have that, whatever we think is the preliminary budget into the paper as the notice for the public hearing. Obviously, the public hearing change can change the budget at the public hearing, but we have to have that preliminary budget ready for publication in the paper, and I think I was looking at like October 25th, if the budget public hearing was going to be November 17th.
So so we are under item five B consideration discussion scheduled for future budget meetings if necessary, right, uh Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I think we need to have a future budget meeting. Uh does this require a motion?
Uh is the other question, can we just finish discussing this at the next board meeting, two weeks from today?
If if it's just appearing, if it's just appearing at the next regularly scheduled board meeting, we do not need a a motion. We will just carry the item over into that into that meeting.
Okay, that answers my question. Then I think we should do that.
Okay, I'll I'll keep it on the agenda uh for the that's the October 20th meeting.
So moving moving on to item C, um about scheduling the budget public hearing, do we still want to keep it at the 17th? Uh we have one more meeting in October, and normally our meeting would be the day after the election, which we were kind of hoping maybe not even have a meeting that day unless we absolutely have to, which we'll know by the end of October in that meeting. So would everybody be fine with leaving it on the re- other board meeting dated the 17th of November?
I personally feel that um the questions that I have are pretty small and uh would not hinder us from moving forward with the uh bu- budget public hearing being on 11/17.
I would assume we can always change this. Correct?
Yes, well, as long as we have seven dates to post it, yes. Right, Lynn?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, so I don't see a problem with it.
So we need a motion then to set the budget public hearing for 11/17, please.
I'll make a motion to schedule the budget public hearing for the November 17th, 2020.
I'm Michael Bell, second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all, whoop, go ahead. Okay, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Uh item D, discussion consideration, tax collection agreement with Green County for 2020 and 2021, and we do this every year. Uh Drake or Lynn can speak on it a little bit more.
Lynn, I'll I'll let you handle this one.
Um not a whole lot to say. We've been um using Green County for collection of taxes since nine uh 2006, so 14 years. It works um very well, uh provides several local banks where people can also pay their taxes. Uh there is a slight increase this year. It's so much per parcel, and it equates to approximately $400 for the entire year, um but it's a very worthwhile service.
You need a motion for that?
Yes, please.
Uh this is Tammy, I'll make a motion for a tax collection agreement with Green County.
Cancer Mike.
Who seconded?
Cancer Mike.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh item six, we'll need a motion to go into closed session, and then a roll call vote, please.
Cancer Mike, I would move to go into closed session.
Tammy, I'll move for a second.
Okay.
Ready for a roll call?
Yep.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Mike Gansher?
Yes.
Peggy Cruz? Peggy Cruz?
Yeah.
Tammy Newberry?
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson?
Yes.
Roger Trutman?
Yes.
Lori Wertz?
Yes.
Okay. Just a moment.
And Lori, your phone number is 219-0734, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, we are in closed session. Drake?
I'm Michael Bell, I will motion to authorize the administrator to submit the offer to Wisconsin Power and Light based on the closed session discussion, and to authorize the village president to sign the document if WPNL and L accept the offer as presented.
I'll second that, this is Chuck.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Any further business? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night.